And I could thank. I'd like to welcome all of you to the special meeting of the Finance and Safety Committee meeting, October 25th, 2021. We'll have a roll call. First, I'm here. Jenny Woo.
Here.
Spencer Abersold.
Here.
Michael Williams.
Here.
Chief Kelly Bucy.
Here.
Mayor Kit Kewen.
Here.
Paul Rice.
Here.
City Administrator Tony Pisecki.
Here.
All right. Thank you all.
And Josh Decker.
And Josh Decker. Internet. City clerk. You, those of us on the committee were sent the minutes, and I hope you've had an opportunity to review those. And I'll entertain a motion to accept as written, if there is one.
I move to accept the September 20th minutes as presented.
Second.
I guess there's no further comments. So those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All right. Moving on, the first item of business is Chief Kelly Bucy is going to discuss the retail theft deterrent ordinance. It's all yours, chief.
All right, I am about to share my screen. I didn't pick the right screen.
No, you didn't.
I don't even know what that screen is. Let's try this one. All right, is that full screen for everybody? My presentation?
I only see half of the slide.
Yes.
There you go.
Okay. Well, thanks for having this special meeting. I know that our next scheduled meeting wasn't till December, and this is an idea that's been stewing around in my brain for a while, and I just wanted to either get going on it or put it on the shelf. And so that would be up to the committee members here. As you know, retail theft is really are one of our biggest crimes, if not the biggest crime in Gig Harbor, costs our merchants a lot of money, but there's a little bit of collateral damage that goes with the retail theft too, and I'll get into that here in a moment. So our retail theft calls for service have gone up substantially. A little dip in 2018 because we tried an experiment. We tried booking every shoplifting suspect. And that actually started to spread. The criminals that came here were surprised to learn that they would go to jail for stealing a T-shirt. It's an expensive way of doing it. It's nothing that would, we could sustain, but we just wanted to see what would happen. And it had a notable effect, I think. Then, of course, the curve started to climb, and it would go up even more had it not been for COVID. As you recall, a lot of businesses were shut down in early 2020. So I think that that curve would be steeper, and we'd be at an all time high for retail theft cases. So I did some analysis here and pulled all of these zip codes from where our thieves are coming from. And now, these are only the thieves that we've captured, right? Suspects and arrestees. So we know the zip codes where they came from. The ones that get away are harder to identify. So certainly, there's a concentration around Gig Harbor of more arrestees. But the purpose of this slide is to illustrate that they're coming from all over the place, even as far as Spokane. And there's organized bands of retail thieves that go all over the place with specific target stores. They'll hit the, well, I don't want to name any here by name, but there's some attractive stores that they'll all hit because they're aware of their loss prevention policies, and they know how that their merchandise is openly displayed. So I'll get, I'll maybe give you a couple of examples here coming in, but I like to call some of these stores the bug light for thieves. And you'll see with some data here a little bit later, why I call it that. Here's an example of something that occurs in Gig Harbor almost on a weekly basis. Okay, this is our local Alta Beauty, a new store in town. You'll watch these two guys come into town. And they'll come into Alta. You'll see the employee is doing, she's trying to customer service him. Right? She's trying to say, can I help you? What kind of, what are you looking for? Trying to just be present to be a deterrent. They're not talking to her. They don't care about her. They know she can't call the police. They know that she can't intervene with them physically. She doesn't know what to do. So now she's following her store policy of calling her loss prevention supervisor who happened to be in California. And that's their protocol. I keep watching Savage and his partner here as they pull out plastic bags from under their shirts and just start sweeping shelves. And again, not an employee to be seen. Nobody can intervene, nor do we want the employee to intervene directly. But the point is, nobody's calling 911. The products are too readily available. And this is really kind of an attractive nuisance, right? So they're just going and selecting high dollar fragrances. That's the hot ticket. They can take these fragrances to several storefronts that are known to sell these, resell them up in Seattle, I think that they had a big takedown of them. So thieves are gone with a grocery bag full of expensive things, $6,000, $7,000 at a time. The good news is these two particular ones we caught. Here's just one more example, a little bit shorter clip. Here's our store employee on the right looking at somebody here carrying a plastic bag. She knows what's going on, but she doesn't know what to do. She can't intervene. She's not empowered by store policy to call the police. She just doesn't know what to do.
But how did you catch the other ones?
They were a band of them that hit some other stores too. So we started comparing notes with other jurisdictions and found out who they were.
And will they, they won't go to jail though, right?
Well, ultimately, they will. My guess is that they won't show for their court dates because we're not booking people into jail right now unless they're violent offenders due to COVID. So they'll probably miss two or three court dates along the way, get arrested on warrants or advised of their warrants and allowed to continue their escapades.
Why don't they call the police?
Okay, well, I'll get into that in a moment. That's a great question, Jenny.
So last question, if, if if they just, you know, if they just moved to another state and they were picked up, would they show our warrant from our state?
It would show, but it would show as non extraditable. Yeah.
So it's just, yeah, it is. It's just a get out of jail free. It's, it's just up to your morals.
The risk is very low right now. Here's another thing that thieves are using emergency exits to leave all the time. I'm absolutely certain they went outside of this particular store to meet their getaway car. Again, an organized group doing this, we kidding with cell phones and moving on to the next store. So a couple of crimes you should be aware of, just beyond normal theft and shoplifting. There are two fairly new crimes in the world, organized retail theft. Right? So if they're, if they steal a felony amount of items with an accomplice or possess those items, or if they do multiple thefts within 180 days that reach that felony level. Okay. Or if they have more, I don't know how they come up with the number six accomplices, but if they talk about it through electronic communication, so if we somehow are able to intercept their texts and that would only come after we arrest them, then we could up the crime to organized retail theft. Now, the good thing is our prosecutor's office has been pretty diligent on prosecuting those when we can put together a solid case. The other crime is retail theft with extenuating circumstances. They leave out the fire door like I just showed you. They cut off the anti-theft device. Or if they've committed three or more retail thefts in six month period. Okay, both of those are felonies. So we have this endless loop, I like to call it. We have the suspect who goes into the store, they steal the merchandise, they leave the store. They may or may not commit other crimes in the area. We respond. If we have enough information, we can investigate and arrest. And then the whole thing just goes over. And the mayor even pointed out that there's just very little penalty, very little risk to do this right now. So I've taken a look at this, trying to say, how can we break this loop? Where can we break these things? Can we keep them from stealing the merchandise, physically lock up the merchandise better? Can we keep them from leaving the store somehow? That one's a little bit tougher. The ultimate goal would be to keep them from going into the store, right? Keep stay out of Gig Harbor and don't commit your other crimes while you're in our town. Some complications to breaking that up, though. Store policies, Councilmember Luke, you just asked about why can't they call the police? Quite frankly, the corporate stores are afraid of arresting the wrong person, or maybe an employee calls out a suspected shoplifter that's not shoplifting, and maybe they're some prominent member of the community, or a person of color, or somebody that's disabled, or something like that, where they're going to get negative publicity. Social media could bury that store. And so they would rather pay the losses. There's one chain that's mostly West Coast based that recently told me that they sustain and are okay with sustaining $1.4 million in loss every month. Because they don't want to risk arresting the wrong person. We don't want them to engage in physical confrontations, right? We don't want that at all. But we would like somebody to be able to pick up the telephone and say, there's somebody sweeping my shelves into garbage bags of merchandise, right? That seems pretty common sense.
Which means we all pay more.
We pay more, and we're paying our police officers and detectives to investigate the hard way, right? There's a lack of loss prevention on site when people, when stores start reeling back their expenses, the first thing they're gonna cut is loss prevention on site. The new legislation makes it very difficult for us right now, too. We can see somebody fleeing a store with a garbage bag full of merchandise, right? But until we go in and talk to a store employee and get probable cause and, and they say, yes, the person with the red hair and the black jacket that jumped into the purple El Camino carrying the garbage bag just stole the items, we can't intervene. We can't forcibly intervene, I should say. Okay, I'm worried about Good Samaritans too. More and more people are talking about, oh, if I see that happen, and I'm going to step between them and the door. Or I'm going to pull a gun or something. We don't want that. That's, that can only lead to trouble. We're in a world where search warrants are required for a lot of information, and in some cases, even store video. Right? And then there's a inconsistency. I use the word lack of technology. I'll say inconsistency of technology. We have so many different formats of video out there. It's hard for us to play them all. We can't keep up with the technology. Sometimes we need a, some sort of a device, and by the way, we're looking into it that allows us to play all the different video types that come out. So, but that's that's cumbersome. Suspects know all these things. They know employees can't put hands on. They know that they can't call 911. So they'll flaunt those things. They tell us these things when we arrest them. So how do we identify the high loss businesses and be fair about it? If we want to, if we want to put some constraints on those businesses, which is where I'm going here, how can we pick them? So initially, I thought, well, let's take a look at their total volume over to the counter sales. What if we said every store that does a million dollars in retail sales? Well, that's not fair. I mean, I'm sure there's probably a jewelry store or an art store, or I don't know what else could, that could exceed a hundred thousand or a million dollars in sales, right? But they're not having those problems. So that would be unfair to them. I thought, well, is there a common type of business? And there's not really one umbrella that fits all. There's definitely, we've got grocery stores to department stores that are, that are experiencing high degrees of theft for different things, alcoholic grocery stores, right? Clothing at some stores, fragrances, as you saw at the beauty stores. So that's not really fair. That could be really subjective. So that doesn't work for us either. So then I thought, how about the total number of police responses per year? Okay, well, what's going to happen there? They're going to start playing the game. They're going to stop reporting certain amount of thefts. Right? So they don't, so that they don't get onto our radar, but they're still drawing in thieves from other places, and in fact, maybe encouraging them. Because the thieves will learn, oh, well, the ABC company won't call the police on me if I only steal $100 at a time. So that's not viable. What I did find was a correlation between the number of police responses and the square footage of the building. Kind of an interesting paradigm of it. So let me show you something here. Last five years, here's all of our shoplifts. This is the number of times that we've called, we've been called for a shoplift at these various places. So I think that's what 17 different businesses. All right. On, that does not, all of the other businesses in our city combined for that same reporting period totals 115. That's everybody else combined. Right? This list does not include three new businesses that I expect are going to be at the top of the chart here. One I just showed you in video. And one is right next door to it. All right, we've already seen that in action. They just haven't been here long enough to make our list. But of these stores, only AT&amp;T is under 11,000 square feet. All right, that's the only common denominator I can find between this, this size of the business and the amount of activity that they generate. And I'll tell you anecdotally, when I look at this list, those are our problem stores. Those are the ones I'd like to see us eliminate shoplifting from.
So I think. You want to interrupt us a quick second? Those, those numbers you just showed for the stores are those reported shoplifts?
Those are times we've been called. So that's, that's very perceptive, Tony. There's probably going to be a lot of times that we're not called. Right? I know for sure that there's stores on this list that won't call us for a certain dollar value.
Right.
There's one on here that jumps out at me that seems to be too low on the list because I know that they're a bug light for thieves. They just simply have no loss prevention at all, even after the fact. So the AT&amp;T store, of course, is focused on phones, right? We can work with a store like that to say, hey, here's how you can lock your stuff up better. Here's some business practices. I'm sure the mayor's familiar in the jewelry industry. You don't let somebody hold three rings at a time, right? So little things like that, we can work with the smaller stores on.
Right question. I know you, I know you've got a plan on this, but um what about, you know, maybe in January, first quarter, calling like two thirds of these and getting their managers together and brainstorming together, what do you feel we can do?
You know, we've done a lot of that, actually. We've gotten meetings with all of the regional loss prevention people and a few of the store managers, assistant managers. They're mostly bound, if you look, most of these are corporate stores, right? They're bound at the corporate level by their rules of engagement, so they can't make change at the local level necessarily. And when, when we talk about those things, there's, there's an acceptable risk to the store individually. What they're not factoring in is the associated crimes that occur in our city, the stolen cars, the, the person passed out at the wheel, you know, after overdosing on heroin. The vehicle prow that occurs next to Home Depot, you know, while they're in town. All these things are related. So they'll say, yeah, you know, we're the Smith store, we can accept $10,000 in loss a month. But it's bigger than that. It extends beyond the walls of that store. So first, the one we think is, how do we help them help themselves, right? That's the right thing to do. So we think about some education. Maybe the Chamber of Commerce has some sort of program they can introduce. I think of business associations, not necessarily the Downtown Waterfront Alliance, because we don't have a problem downtown, at least it's reported to us. Of course, in the holiday season, we send extra officers on foot patrol in those areas just to kind of protect the small businesses that make Gig Harbor what they are. And maybe the police department here, we can come up with some sort of outreach too, just to give the employees some education. I mean, I just referenced the AT&amp;T store. We can work with them about how to only hand the customer one phone at a time, that sort of stuff. And where we would break the cycle on these things is somewhere just trying to get them from stealing the merchandise, right? So then we want the businesses to help us, right? So we could maybe set some requirements for some of these businesses if they make our list of eye level cameras at the entrances and exits. Right now is a beautiful time to be a shoplifter because you can wear a mask and a ball cap. We have no idea who you are. But in non-COVID times where masks aren't the thing, eye level cameras are really helpful. Too many stores have cameras in the ceilings, right? All you would do is wear a ball cap. You can't tell who you are. License plate readers in their parking lots, things like that would really help us too. Uniform term, maybe not even uniform, but loss prevention on site, a minimum hours per month, making them obvious is a good crime deterrent. Managers or employees empowered to call 911 if certain criteria are met. We see instances in a couple of stores where dress, that people can carry five tablet computers into a dressing room without a lick of clothes and emerge with one laptop or one tablet computer. Right? And nobody challenges them. Those are just simple things to me. High theft items. Finally, we're seeing the liquor getting locked up a little bit at the grocery stores, but not much. Electronics are far too accessible. Fragrances, right? They could just put out a tester instead of put out their entire inventory. So there's things like that that we'd like to see them do and maybe really prompt them to do delays on the emergency exit doors. I think Costco has those. And that's a good thing. They usually have those near where they store their cigarettes and things like that. So those are helpful. So we would probably keep them from even going into those stores, or at least keep them from stealing merchandise to try to break that cycle. And then finally, helping the businesses help the community, right? We talked about the peripheral crimes. We just don't want them coming to Gig Harbor if we can. I mean, will, will we ever reach zero thefts in Gig Harbor? No. But if we can get the word on the street, like when we were booking people, everybody, that word got out on the street. People weren't coming to Gig Harbor, right? So that's, that's my brainstorm, something that we've done in the interim. We just launched this a couple of weeks ago, is what we called a business check. Where we appreciate that a corporate store employee may not be able to call the police to say, hey, there's a shoplifter in my store right now. The corporation, of course, is afraid of profiling and making a wrongful apprehension. But we've, we've set it up with 911 now that employee can call and say, hey, this is Kelly from the ABC store. I'd like a business check. And at 911, they won't ask them any more questions. They'll simply say, business check, got it. We'll tell the police. Right? So now they're not identifying any suspects. They're not even saying necessarily that there's a crime going on. We don't go into the situation with any pretenses. We don't know who we might be looking for or who might be profiled, if you will. But it alerts our officers that the employee thinks there might be something going on. And we're going to go to the area. And sometimes that's a deterrent. In fact, I'll go as far as saying, we've already seen that succeed in a couple of weeks. We've done this. Where an officer will show up in the parking lot at a mark patrol car park right in front of the front doors. And the lookout that's waiting in the getaway car calls into the people inside and says, hey, cops are here, don't want to steal. So that might make a little bit of a mark. We're hoping that that does. I don't know of any other jurisdictions that are doing that, although I've shared this with a couple of other chiefs, and they're kind of watching to see how it works for us. So I can report moderately favorable results so far, and we hope it continues. But that's just an interim step. That's just treating the symptom. What I'm looking at is some sort of ordinance that kind of forces the businesses to be better victims to it in that they have to have loss prevention on site for those eye level cameras or or, or, or other ideas I haven't even thought of. And we tie that to their business license renewal. There is precedent for this. Our, in our cabaret license now, right? Strip clubs, if we were to have one, would come with some requirements. They'd have to have managers on site. They'd have to have security at the doors. There's things like that that's already in place. Other jurisdictions have put similar restrictions on hotels. Lakewood, Des Moines, right? If they identify a place that's a high crime area, they can institute requirements for those businesses, or they can just shut them down. So that's not the goal. We don't want to shut any businesses down. But that would be our lever. That would be the point. We could insert some of these requirements. We'd of course gather stakeholder input, you know, as the mayor even referenced, talking to some of the managers, it would probably be more at the corporate level than the local level at this point. And say, what does this look like from your eyes? Or what can you do to help us? Right? Those are my thoughts. I'm just, I'm tired of sending our officers to take the reports. Right? While we watch the crime trend grow, and I'm looking for a way to intervene. And by bringing this up here at the, at the committee level, I'm just looking for some council direction. Maybe this is something you're not interested in. Maybe a watered down version of it, maybe in a more aggressive version. I don't know. Realizing it would come with some pushback from the businesses. I don't know how much, depends on what we would, would introduce, but wanted to throw it out there for discussion and see if that's something you wanted to spend staff and a little bit of attorney time on developing. Back to you, Chair Rodenberg.
Yes. Spencer, you had a comment?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, chief, for thinking about this and spending time probably in your off duty life going over solutions.
2:00 AM every morning. That's what I do.
Exactly. I want to say on the business checks, when I used to bartend at the Tides, we would do that all the time. And the police were always very responsive. I worked night, so we, we probably didn't have as much police activity at night as we do during the daytime, but they're always showing, showed up right away. And just would come and make their presence known, and that always kind of diffused whatever tension there might have been. As far as steps, I like the idea of cameras. I like getting some kind of, put the onus back on the business itself. And so my, I guess my question would be, is there any way we could publish a list of businesses that, you know, maybe get the Chief Bucy Award for being, you know, cooperative with our community. You know, just raising awareness to the public. I think, I think we need to counter them with their own fears, and their fear is being called out for being, you know, bad business plays. And so why not use that against them and say, hey, listen, if you're promoting crime by allowing this to happen within our community, we should be able to list you as a business that does that, so that our public can know that maybe they don't want to support your business if you're going to have these lax business practices. And so maybe there's a monthly list that gets published by the city that says, you know, these businesses are our best businesses, and these businesses are not so good at theft prevention.
Well, that would be a decision made by, you know, the council, of course. I certainly wouldn't do something that aggressive toward a business on my own. So that would have to, you know, be a direction.
Right. And then it would have to have some kind of little language at the bottom, why we do this, why we feel the need to, you know, inform our citizenry. But I think our citizens don't know this. And I think they'd be surprised and shocked to, to know that there's a solution.
Well, with this whole campaign, if this went to an ordinance sort of level, the business check thing, I'm hoping flies into the radar. I don't want to let that be known too far and wide. I mean, I know this is a recorded public meeting, but I don't want to go to the media with this concept. If we went to an ordinance, it would be a massive here's what we're doing. Hey, criminals, pay attention and tell your friends.
Jenny, you had a comment?
Yes, thank you. So I really like the tying it to the business license and working, as you said, with the stakeholders. And because, as, as you said, and pointed out very clearly, when they come to steal our, from our businesses, we don't want them stealing from or creating crime in our neighborhoods or anywhere else in the city. So I'm not in favor of shaming any businesses. I don't think that's really productive, but, but I'd love to see this tied to our business license and in some way. And, and because I really think once it's explained to the businesses that we want to keep crime out of Gig Harbor totally and that this is a really good way to do it. Perhaps then the businesses would be more agreeable to this, especially if they have some input in it. But I'm totally in favor of going on and having more conversations with the attorney and our attorney and whatever else you think that you need to do, chief.
And, and to be open with you here, Daniel Kenny has weighed in quite a bit. I can forward you an email he sent me. He had a legal assistant do a little bit of research on this, and that's where I came up with the precedent that he cited. So he's intrigued with the idea. There's probably some obstacles to overcome, but.
And so what you can see there under the precedent, the cabaret license and hotel, that has to do with the use. So every cabaret that's in town, if we had any, would have to follow the same requirements. Every hotel that's in town would have to follow the same requirements. In this particular case, we have land use that is basically retail sales, but we might be able to break it down a little bit more to say these types, the subtypes of retail sales are the ones that have to do some of these extra things. It can also be based upon activity and things that happen at the store that the more that happens, the more things they have to do. And that's, for example, what the hotel motel ordinance in Des Moines did. The more police activity and the type of activity that they had, the more things that they had to do the following year to keep your business license.
Oh, I like that.
I will also tell you, though, when we first passed the ordinance, of course, the newspaper was, was following it. And as soon as the first year of the ordinance came and went, and we put together our letters to each one of the hotels saying, here's how you did this year, and here are the things you have to do. The paper asked for that information, and they published it. So if we have that sort of a ordinance, then I could see the media wanting to see how did everyone do? Ordinance, then I could see the media wanting to see how did everyone do and who's who are the good ones and who are the ones aren't doing so well.
Chief, I just had one comment, or actually two. One was, you talked about talking to the loss prevention. Managers at corporate headquarters. And as you just said, that they may be in Arizona. I think it would be a good idea to talk to them. As well and see how it contrasts to the the actual workers in the store. I think some of these businesses ought to also look at. Do their employees feel threatened when this is going on? That might be something to push them over the hill and get them to do something. And I I think Spencer had a Councilman Albert Salt had a good idea with. Don't wanna shame any business, but the idea of of saying. XYZ company did an excellent job of improving their. You know, just compliment the ones that do do well. And it would be a unwritten shame on the ones that did not. So that's just my comment. Anything else?
I think they were interested in having you go further with it.
And so I'm definitely hearing that.
Yes, I think so as well.
Yeah, rea- real- realize there would be pushback. That's what I that's the point I really wanna make sure you come away with, but I I think it's it. It would draw some attention probably within Western Washington, right? And other cities might eventually pick up on it if we can blaze the trail.
But Chief, I think as far as pushback goes, you're right, but I think if if we framed it in such a way. As we are protecting our retailers, we're protecting their losses, we're protecting. The merchants that that shop, not the merchants, but the patrons that shop there. And and frame it like this is a a good thing.
Yeah.
I think. That would be, that would be the skill in. In getting less pushback, I believe.
I also have to, you know, if if um. I know people that work at Ultra, you know, and. I mean, I I don't think, you know, I don't know how they're doing with it, but if I think there's a young, a lot of young employees or or any age employees that. If they're watching this and they're associated with this happening, they're gonna be looking for another job. They're gonna say, I I don't want, I don't wanna put myself in this kind of situation. Cause it could turn. So I would think the retailers would. Would have a big turnover of their staff. If if they don't, if they don't wanna back anything to curtail this.
So I guess then the next steps, if I may offer Chair Rodenberg, is that I would. Develop maybe a draft ordinance on my own, have Daniel review it. And then bring it back to the December, late December meeting. If I can get it done by then.
A meeting of this committee?
Yes.
Okay, I I think if you could send that to us just prior to to the meeting. Then we could study it and maybe be more productive in the meeting.
Absolutely.
Is there anything else, anything else, Chief, on this?
I I know, and I will stop sharing my screen so I don't hog the the whole meeting.
Okay.
Thank you for working on this. This is a good idea and we we need to do something, goodness knows, because. As we saw from that video, they just go shopping in these stores and nothing happens and. And and whether they leave with a great speed that gets them on the freeway or whether they crash into one of our citizens. You know, we need to do something, that's for sure. So thanks for being proactive.
Thanks for the support.
The second thing on our agenda is fireworks. Not sure who brought this to the committee. I can only assume maybe it was Jenny.
So yes, and this is not so much fireworks as the fire marshals ability to perhaps. Limit fireworks and we need to do so during a special event if it's really dry. There is a an ordinance, I think that all of you have. It's ordinance number. Twenty twenty one point seventy nine, and this was passed by Pierce County. And what it does is it gives a Pierce County Fire Marshal. The authority to issue a temporary order prohibiting the discharge of consumer fireworks. And in order for him to do that. I believe as I read this and perhaps. Mr. Rice, you have read this and and Katrina, there has to be a certain information. You just don't say. We're not gonna have them this year. I think that it has to be substantiated by a burning index. Or the fuel moisture content or things like that. So. So I would like to see this, if there's interest going forward, giving our fire marshal. The ability to follow along with Pierce County and if there is an extreme dryness. That is unsafe to have them, then he could, he could have, he could have not have fireworks that year on that day on July fourth. So is.
I have a question, Jenny.
Sure.
Is your intent to for us just to follow the Pierce County Fire Marshal or are we going to do our testing ourselves?
Oh, do we test, Paul?
We we currently don't. And Pierce County typically they've relied on DNR. They've had, they've had an ordinance in place. They kind of, what what they did is, as sometimes happens is. We updated our fireworks ordinance, as you know, last year to. Regulate the days of discharge just to July fourth. Pierce County then went and looked at their fireworks ordinance and they've kind of followed suit. And they've limited in this or proposed or, well, I guess it's adopted now. Ordinance, they limited their days of discharge to July fourth. They did actually also allow discharge days. For the for New Year, so they kind of went a little bit less restrictive than they were before. But in looking at their entire fireworks ordinance, there was already a provision. In that. As far as the reporting criteria, that the fire marshal was to. Look at three different items, two DNR reports and then. A site specific evaluations at six different locations throughout the county. And then he was to report to he or she, it's he now, was to report to the council. And then they could make a determination as to whether they were going to have an emergency declaration and prohibit fireworks. What this ordinance did is it took it out of the council's hands. And put it into the fire marshal's hands in collaboration with the county executive. So they already had provisions in place. They just kind of switched the the authority.
Right.
What they also did, though, is they took, there there was three criteria for this declaration. Two evaluations or reports from DNR and then just one at the local level. They took out the other two. From DNR completely, which is kind of surprising, given that. As I was talking to Katrina about this earlier, I mean, Pierce County has a tremendous amount of DNR land. I mean, they go from. First counties like over eighteen hundred square miles. They go from Long Branch all the way out to. Just them out, basically. So that was kind of a surprising thing to take that out of that component.
Spencer, if you'll just allow me to say something first. That your point is what I thought of and it is, they are so huge. You know, where they do their testing may not be relative to what's going on downtown Tacoma. So they are keeping people from downtown Tacoma from celebrating with fireworks. And I think that. I I think that's unfair. And I I we go on and on about how we want local control. And how we don't want the state mandating things and how we don't want the county to tell us this is what we have to do, this is what we have to do. And here we are wanting to almost photocopy or. A cut and paste their ordinance, which the one provided actually allowed for eight days fireworks. Lighting off. Go ahead, Spencer.
Yeah, so I got two comments. Number one, when I I did a lot of camping this summer and pretty much. Well, almost all of the places I went to, they had bans on campfires. Which, you know, are essential part of camping all all summer long. But I don't think anyone really complained or felt put out or or felt like that was heavy handed or. You know, outrageous. I think everyone was pretty accepting of that. So if if you can take out campfires from camping. You know, if the situation is dangerous, I think you can remove fireworks from the Fourth of July. We're in a terrible situation. I also noticed that when you drive out on the Key Peninsula. There's a fire station right next to, I think it's Gateway Park. That has a sign that says, you know, fire hazard levels, you know, whether it's high, moderate. Whatever they got color coordinated little things. And I I would say that any time seventy two hours before the Fourth of July or after the Fourth of July. If, you know, these signs are registering high or severe fire danger. You know, then we would, you know, have some ordinance that says, you know, those conditions are met, we need to have a ban. Or or something to that effect. Those are just.
Yeah, personally, I think that we should confine that kind of thing to Gig Harbor. You know, heaven knows the the opportunities to instill patriotism in our youth. Are far and few between. And this is the one opportunity that, one of the opportunities, maybe the best one. That we have to do that is to celebrate the Fourth of July, not at the cost of a fire, though. So if we could constrain it to just Gig Harbor. I'd feel much better about it.
So this is just Gig Harbor. That's all we can do is six and a half square miles.
I would mean the testing done in Gig Harbor, you know, I mean.
So Katrina, did you have any comments?
Not in a forest in Pierce County.
Yeah.
As as Paul mentioned, you know, when we were. Speaking about this this morning, there's a couple of things, you know, there's obvious differences between Gig Harbor and Pierce County, right? You know, we're what, six square miles? Pierce County, as Paul said, goes Long Branch to Mount Rainier, and I think. When when you look at provision of service, you know, if there if there were to be a fire, how quickly could fire department? Get to somewhere in Gig Harbor, that would be a lot quicker. Or faster than going out to, let's say, Ashford or LB. So I think it is important when we're looking at this to kind of look at the differences and, you know, if this is germane to our to our. To our city, one of the, you know, as Paul mentioned, there were three indicators or criterias before, and one of them. Councilmember Abrams was the burn index. So one of the original in the Pierce County original draft was that the burn index had to be as at extreme. I'm not sure if they do, if DNR does a big harbor extreme or if it's just a statewide, I'm not sure kind of how. That's categorized. The second is the fuel moisture content. For ten hour fuels is below an eight as determined by the Pierce County Fire Marshal. I do know that, as Paul mentioned, the Pierce County Fire Marshal does that. We don't currently do that here. So if we were into something like that, we would need to. Come up to speed with that. And then the third was the energy release component is in the ninetieth percentile is determined by the DNR. And Pierce County, again, that that's the second one Paul mentioned, that Pierce County removed, so it would be a real Pierce County decision. So. Another consideration, as I just said, all of that would be if we were to go down this route, what criteria would you expect Paul to utilize? In his position so that it wasn't going to be an arbitrary. Decision, if we were not gonna have fireworks that year, if you're gonna go down that route. Another consideration that I would recommend the committee consider is the enforcement. Of this, if we were to do it and Paul is, so if we did do this and Paul said. Okay, there's no fireworks this year because we're at extreme. What would then be, you know, how would Chief and the Police Department handle that? And what would be, you know, those levels of service? So I definitely think this is a really valid conversation to have, to see if does it fit in the harbor? How can we make it? And then look at the pros and cons and the work that would be necessary to implement.
Right, that's what I would like to see. I would like to see how much it would. Cost, obviously, we need to look at the budget if there's money involved. What Paul thinks would be the criteria, it should not be arbitrary. And there should be some criteria. And yeah, I I just, I think it's important because. If there is a fire in Pierce County and our fire engines are off someplace in Pierce County. Then while they might be able to get to us quickly, they may not be able to get to us quite so quickly if they're in Pierce County as well. So. If they're over and on or over on the peninsula or someplace. So so I I would like to see. Oh, if Paul could come up with any criteria, if the if the commission wants to. Look at this any further. I'm I'm in favor of of having continue this conversation and see where it goes.
I'd one thought, and again, I've been doing a few emails as well. I think it's good to follow what Pierce County does. But for our city to try to monitor it ourselves. I think the county has much more ability to be able to do that. And they and they're actually more prone to fire. And so Highway sixteen, who's under, you know, let's say that gets really dry. Kelly, is that, is that the county's responsibility to say, okay? You know, there's a fire there or the potential fire on off in the middle of, I mean, every year we see lots of burns in the middle of freeway and on the side. Is that's not the city's responsibility. That would be the county to assess that, correct?
Yeah, I don't know that they get that specific with their assessments, but.
Yeah, I don't know. I just worry of, we're limited right now with our staff. And I think we should maybe see, I think Pierce County, if they're already coming up with this, then they're already on top of it.
So, well, I I'm able to do that, but it seems like it's, I'm not sure that it's really. I I think as as someone said, that Pierce County has a lot more land. I I don't know that it's the same criteria that would be for a city as it would be for for rural. Population or rural environment. I I would like to know if it's how how much time is involved and what the cost is involved. And and how much testing would need to be done by Paul and his department? If it's, if it is a lot of money, if it's a lot of testing, then maybe we would go with just Pierce County. But but, you know, I think I think we should look at what Gig Harbor.
But wasn't this brought to, wasn't this brought to our attention by Pierce County?
Not that I'm aware of.
But didn't Pierce County say if it gets really dry next year, we're thinking of. You know, during emergency?
Well, that's what this, that's what this ordinance is all about, is that if it gets dry, their their fire, Pierce County Fire Marshal. Has the ability to say no fireworks on July fourth. And so the our our ordinance would say, if it gets really dry in Gig Harbor. Our Fire Marshal also has the ability to say no fireworks on July fourth.
I have no idea what the protocol is for this kind of testing. If if Pierce County is doing it on a regular basis. Maybe it's something we could have them come out and do for us up a corner of Peacock and Borgan or something and.
I like that.
You know, maybe, maybe it's something we could farm out to them.
I like that idea. I'd be supportive of that. We, there's only so much you can put on staff.
But I think the point here is to move along. That. It looks like there's enough interest to bring this further. I saw. Councilman Aberstall shaking his head, yes. And I am certainly pro fireworks, but this is not necessarily a fireworks issue. This is more a. A fire issue, so.
Right.
I don't know what the step would be going forward.
Well, I think the next thing to do is kind of what Councilmember Luke was describing. And what Councilmember, or I'm sorry, what Mayor Kuhn was saying. That let's take a look at what testing we can do, who could do it, what would it cost, how quickly can it be done? So reaching out to the Pierce County Fire Marshal and to DNR and just saying, how are you getting your data? And is that something we can piggyback on? So we get, we could even just do some regular testing. So we start. And sometime in early to mid June, once things start to dry out. And. But I think I think jumping in with what the other guys are doing and just having a site or two tested in Gig Harbor would be a way to start looking at this.
So city administrator Pisecchi, is this something that you could direct staff to? Wade into a little bit?
Yeah, I think I could sit down with Paul and Katrina, we could put together a little game plan to gather more. Yeah, I think I could sit down with Paul and Katrina, we could put together a little game plan to gather, gather more data. And more information as to how we would accomplish this. Sure.
Yeah, and then we could bring it up at another one of these meetings and see if we need to go to full council.
Correct.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Well, then that concludes that item. Is there anything else with the good of the order on the Finance and Safety Committee?
Not that I have.
That being the case, then see most of you in thirty minutes if I have a motion to adjourn. Those are all the votes we need.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.